Okay, back in.
Here.
Deb Wilson.
Here.
Erin Burge.
Here.
Marcia Scheris.
Here.
All done.
Here.
Now entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll get started with item A, the CISA 10 Presentation on Construction Process and CISA Contract.
As we get closer to our April 7th referendum vote, by the time where we start to talk about what next steps in that process will be, and we have Lance Greggich and Brad Conkle with us, both come out of CISA 10 Facilities Management Services, both work in project management. So gentlemen, I turn the mic over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight on this beautiful evening. Start off with introductions. My name's Lance Greggich. So I'm the manager of a project management department. We have a pretty full staff of project managers, coordinators, and other project specialty people. Our marketing campaign at CISA 10 has been in full swing. Looking at the 2028 referendum, we'll have some community meetings coming up tomorrow. Luke Schultz will be back to present at those. The goal of tonight is really for me to introduce what our approach is, what our processes are, and I believe you all have a copy of what our construction management contract looks like. And I'll talk a little bit about that process and the structure. We're not approving anything tonight or looking for approval. That would be something we'd be looking at at a future meeting on March 16th. So with that, the kind of, some of the key highlights of our contract, it's structured as a construction management as agent contract, and that's, so the contracts are directly, well, subcontract are directly with the district. That saves a lot of bonding cost. CISA 10, our project management department manages that entire process of the project. We approve everything initially. District always has final approval. We work very closely with the admin team. That adds a lot of flexibility and a lot of oversight. We review all payments, submittals, requests for information, work and construction schedules. And we work to benefit the school by looking at, augmenting our schedules for the best investment, including project investment bonding and work times. Our contracts are structured at 1.7% of project cost plus type of materials. Brad Conkle, this is one of our lead project managers. Brad's got like eight or nine years of experience in construction management on large-scale referendums. And Brad would be overseeing the project. He's the point of contact along with Luke Schultz and myself as the manager. We also have a bunch of additional people that we would bring in as needed. That's one thing that sets us apart is if we bring in people specific for a needed task. So as we talk about our type of material costs, you know, Brad's gonna be here. Somebody from CISA 10 is gonna be here every day during construction. And then we bring our experts in as needed. If it's HVAC expert, or plumbing expert, or safety expert, or whatever that is, we bring that in as needed in coordination with the admin team and letting them know, updating the schedules and day-to-day construction. We also bring in A&E firms as needed. That's the next kind of step through this process as we talk about that. So things that will require actual engineering and architecture, there's a lot of measures that don't. So I'll let Brad talk a little bit about the construction approach.
So on this project specifically, we're looking at about $6.5 million of new construction and renovations. We're looking at about $9.5 million worth of deferred maintenance. As Lance was saying, we try to eliminate as much unneeded overhead as possible. So with that being said, we have already been review of all the fins basically. And the new construction, we obviously need to go to an architect and engineer for construction documents. But a large portion of the renovations as well as the deferred maintenance, we can break that out separately. So we're not looking at that 6%, 7% overhead markup by the A&E. And on top of that, there are several measures that the district's looking to do in-house as well. So we're not trying to get greedy. We're a nonprofit. We'll let the district handle that as they need. If there's any small assistance they need, you know, budgetary numbers we have to track. We have to figure out the hard costs after the fact. But we're not gonna put our percentage on that type of work. We've also started to build a tenant schedule. There's some work that if the referendum were to pass, we could look at doing it this summer yet. But a large majority of the work will have to take place between summer 2021 and summer 2022. That'll be largely due with the design turnaround. And yeah, otherwise, that's about all I have.
So bringing it together, next steps is take the time to review and digest our contract. Reach out to Luke Schultz and myself for any questions. Our approach, you know, we're very transparent. We work with the admin team, very flexible. We're a third party. Our oversight is directly to increase the value of your investments in your school district. So with that, we're gonna keep moving forward with our marketing campaign and outreach until April 7th. Once the referendum passes, that's when you'll start looking at the A&E part of it. Any questions?
What does A&E stand?
A.D. Architecture and Engineering. Thank you.
So for board members, you do not have that contract in your packet. This is an informational packet. We will make sure that you have that. And you know, as Lance and Brad have indicated, please take a look at it if you have questions. We'll make sure that we get those questions answered for you in the short term here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, the referendum update.
Well, lots of events coming up regarding the referendum. We have three referendum information sessions coming up tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM in the Spooner Middle School Media Center. Next week on March 9th at the Spooner Elementary Media Center. Again, both of those events at 6:00 PM. On Thursday, March 12th, we will have a referendum presentation for community leaders beginning at 7:15 AM in the Spooner Elementary School cafeteria. We have some referendum presentations in the community in the coming week as well. We'll present to the Spooner City Council tomorrow evening, to the Spooner Chamber of Commerce on Wednesday morning, and to the town of Trejo on March 10th. Our twice-weekly referendum-focused social media posts started last week. So two posts went out last week. We know the first post went out earlier in the week, and it reached 1,856 people. So that was good. And the second post went out on Friday. So it just went out on Friday. 801 people reached on that. So we know that the social media posts are getting out there and certainly are being viewed.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks for the update. Moving on to item C, the 21st Century Community Learning Center's CLC update.
So hello. Thank you for giving me some time to share updates regarding the 21st Century CLC grant at both the elementary and the middle school programs. The first thing I want to share with you, after I get my documents up here. The first thing I want to share with you is the vision of the before and after-school program. We are here to improve student achievement by providing enrichment opportunities in conjunction with day school in a safe, positive, and structured out-of-school learning environment where children interact with peers and caring adult role models. That's the message we try to share with parents, students, and our staff. I'd like to share first about our elementary program, a quick update. After receiving our second five-year grant at the elementary school, we have added three days of before-school program, specialized clubs, including choir and ukulele music clubs, more service learning clubs, STEM and WIN clubs at each grade level, social-emotional learning and positive action clubs, and a book club, as well as many others. We've also increased partnerships. Our four partnerships that we have been strengthening have been the Spooner Memorial Library, UW Extension, Washburn County, the AODA Washburn County Group. There's Chet Hurt and Tammy Holman as the specialist there. We've been strengthening that. And then also Marshfield Clinic Health System. We are adding socially-emotional learning groups through a grant with Marshfield Clinic Health System. At the elementary level, we are currently serving over 125 students, and our average daily attendance is 49. And so we are very strong at the $100,000 level per year. We are definitely achieving that goal and should not have any question about further funding. You see on this slide, with our new grant, we have 16 different goals at the elementary level. In order to get that grant the second time, we had to increase the number of goals. It was pretty obvious when we were looking at other grants from other schools. I would like to highlight a few of the key grant goals that you should be aware of. You see on this slide, two different reading improvement grants, graphs, and we are well on our way to meeting both of those improvement goals. The first one, student growth percentile and star reading. We were shooting for an 80%. 80% of our frequent program attendees in kindergarten and first grade to show at least one level of reading improvement, and we're well on our way to doing that. And then also students in grades second through fourth to improve their student growth percentile by no less than 25%. And again, working toward that nicely. Other key goals that we're working toward in the elementary grant are increasing the amount of STEM-related clubs for our students, increasing art, service learning, physical activities, and socially-emotional learning programs. We also want to increase family engagement and supportive student learning, decrease physical aggression among the students that participate regularly, and increase positive self-concept and positive behaviors. And then also improve our environment of the after-school learning program bridging day school. Now I'd like to share information about our middle school grant. We are in the third year of our second five-year grant at the middle school level, currently serving over 145 students with an average daily attendance of 48. So again, well within our funding tier and no concerns about not receiving that money throughout the five-year grant. We offer students several options for learning outside of the classroom and in interest-based clubs. In addition to the following, there's others besides these. We offer coding and cooking, service learning. This year, this fall, we offered biking, chess club, 4H, STEM, art, drama, and more. At the middle school level, we really work hard to provide student voice and choice, more so than at the elementary level. As we know, children walk with their feet, talk with their feet at that level. And we really do want to give them more opportunities that they wish to see. Here you see a couple of how we're reaching a couple of our main goals with the middle school grant. And at the middle school level, we only have about four goals that we're working towards. The first one is to increase student achievement in math and reading. And we're on our way to meeting the reading goal, and we are working toward the math goal. In the reading goals, we wanted to increase the number of, so for math, I mean, we wanted to increase the number of math support clubs in the morning and working to increase numbers in those clubs. We're currently offering three math programs in the mornings during the week. And so that's an increase from past years. Also, our math teachers are offering a math hoops program through the NDA. And it really, when I was looking online and talking with our teachers, it really does show a huge difference, not only in student engagement in math and their interest and their different variety of math concepts that are real to life. So the children are having fun and they're learning according to what we are seeing in that math hoops program. And our middle school teachers who are leading it are very excited about it. Also, we want to improve student positive behavior conduct and improve student understanding of bullying. At the middle school level, our student, our school guidance counselor, Ashley Velela, has been meeting with all of the students to help meet this third goal, to improve student understanding of bullying and positive behavior through three approaches. She's been coming once a week to offer guidance in the specific areas that relate to issues students have been seeing during day school. We've also been involved in the socially-emotional learning grant with Marshfield Clinic at that level, which is a targeted socially-emotional group of children that we're helping with eight tools to learn. And then also working with our local AODA specialist out of Washburn County on a collaborative called Positive Actions. And that's a curriculum that we've also then dipped into the elementary level through UW Extension. In addition to these items, we are also increasing, more of our students are also being exposed to Positive Actions with Tammy Holman, the AODA specialist. In collaboration with her, we wrote a DPI grant to gain more tools on avoiding those AODA issues and building positive self-concept. And then the final goal is to increase family engagement and connectiveness. And so we are offering several family events, and we've increased communication with day school teams and families. So we're well on our way to working towards all of our goals, and funding should continue without any worries.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions? Thank you. Great work. Thank you so much. Moving on to item D, the Spooner Elementary School English Language Arts ELA/Math Interventionist Proposal.
Good evening, everyone. Pete Hopkey, Spooner Elementary School Principal. And I'm accompanied by Kristy Alt and Shandra Stafford just to speak about the proposal that we have here. So just bringing us back to some of the students' needs that we've identified over the past year and talking with teachers is, during our WIN time, what's going on is we're able to split our students up into six different groups. Ones with a supervised professional, an interventionist, and four different classroom teachers. These group sizes are still pretty large when you really look at trying to individualize some of that instruction. And it gets a little more, it's harder to split up, especially when you have students that are progressing into Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. And what I listed there was some of the limitations. So if they're in a Tier 2, we can only have 10 students in there at a time. Likewise with Tier 3, that means they're getting the most intensive instruction. They're limited to five students. So it's making sure that we are giving them the most individualized instruction possible. So with that said, it really limits how we can break out students. Also, we really look at trying to get more opportunities to show increased growth and achievement before the gap widens. So we want to make sure that we're giving that intervention at an earlier age and really try to divert some of the attention that we get later on with that gap widening. Early intervention definitely does show an increased success for students' achievement later on. And also just making sure that, you know, the elementary staff identified this when we talked early in the year, and we presented that in January.
Yeah. So I just, from a teacher perspective, want to go back to the group size. I'll give examples. Last year, we had, we had four sections of 4th grade. So we had to split up our kids into Tier 2, Tier 3, and then amongst the classroom teachers. So there was three classroom teachers that took the universal kids, and then the Tier 2 and Tier 3 got broken up. And I did the enrichment, and there was over 30 kids in the enrichment. And then in Tier 2, which was another classroom teacher, there was, I believe, about five kids. So that group size is very hard to instruct with 30 kids versus another classroom teacher only having those five kids in there. And then that conversation that when we meet in our PLCs and have our conversations about what we're doing for instruction during WIN time, it's hard for that other classroom teacher that has to do the Tier 2 to have that conversation with us to know what we're instructing, what we're doing for our skill instruction versus what they're doing in Tier 2 and Tier 3. So it kind of only leaves technically three of us. And there's another classroom teacher that doesn't get to take part in that conversation, which is pretty hard.
And I would just piggyback on that and say that right now in the grade level that I teach, we have a student that could potentially move to a Tier 3 situation. And that would be one student with the current reading interventionist, which would make that group size just one-on-one then. And then the Tier 2 would be taken by a classroom teacher, which obviously, it would just be a trickle-down effect. The group sizes would just get larger and larger as the needs of the kids, so we can meet the needs of the kids.
So just taking a quick look at that enrollment. What we're looking at here is the reduced class size strategy for grades K through 3. That's part of the Achievement Gap Reduction Plan. And that was stuff that we talked about in January. It was the Farmer Sage Program. Next year, what we're looking at is the 4th grade section numbers would be 15 to 16 students per section if we had the four sections. Versus three sections, we would be looking at 20 to 21. And I know our objective is to have 22 students in a classroom. So to really get after this, what we're looking at for our proposed change is reducing that 4th grade to three sections and then using that additional, that FTE, that full-time position in the building as an interventionist role to provide that additional WIN or what I need instruction. Identified staff eligible for this move, knowing that interventionist needs a 316 license, reading license that is. And then qualified staff members in the SES currently that have that license. So we've got individuals in the building that can meet that need. And then after a year, what we've come back to is review the student data and determine, was this truly an effective move? You know, what are we seeing as far as student growth? And make sure that it was a viable move. Okay? All right. So moving on to our recommendation, what we're recommending is to approve the academic interventionist position. And what does that mean for our students? Providing more specific, or specifically tailored instruction for students in that small group time or that WIN time. And then provide more opportunities for groups of students in learning and that teacher collaboration with that to improve that instructional growth.
Have any questions?
Do you currently have, do you currently have someone that's willing to do this position?
Yes. We have people that are willing to make that move. But at this point in time, we can't really talk about personnel moves until this is approved and move on, so.
So is this, is this going to, is this going to tailor that gap from the WIN to get them to where you think they're gonna need to be for instruction purposes, then?
That's the intent, is truly to get smaller groups at those younger ages to really head off the widening gap that we see later on in their educational career, so.
And then what happens when you have, at some point, you have students enough for four sections again? Then what happens?
Yeah, and that's part of that reassessing at the end of the year as well. Obviously, we have to take a look at what is our current enrollment? What is our enrollment at that time? And make some decisions at that point, so.
Just to help with, so the, on grade level, the ones that are getting very large are the 30-plus students in one. Does this, conceptually, it frees up a classroom teacher to then split that group? I mean, is that what you were saying? So interventionists would work with the smaller Tier 1 or Tier 2 or Tier 3 group? So that a classroom teacher would be freed up to help?
That is correct with our K3, absolutely.
So ideally, we would like to see that there could be an intervention teacher for Tier 2 and Tier 3, and then the other kids would be split amongst the classroom teachers into those smaller groups. Then when we have those PLC discussions, everybody's on the same page about the skill that we're trying to reteach and all that. Plus, the intervention teachers are sharing what the other students are doing too for their progress. But then we're really all on the same page.
Okay. Thank you.
Question from Mr. Hopkey. Is the WIN time the only time that this interventionist would work with students? Or would there be other opportunities to support student learning as well?
Primarily, it would be during that WIN time because our WIN times start at 8:20 and they're going constantly up until 2:35, if I remember correctly with the schedule. So yeah, it's a full date where they're meeting both students on ELA as well as math, so.
So there are some significant WIN needs throughout the course of the school day?
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Any further questions?
This is for all grades, right? Or just?
So this interventionist would be meeting with all grades, yes. So. K-4, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to item E, the Spooner High School School Improvement Plan Presentation.
So we're gonna, if you don't mind, we're gonna kind of combine Link Crew and our School Improvement Plan with our Link Crew in the back. They're wearing their T-shirts, so they'll be up shortly. So to get us started, we're gonna take a look at some things that are going on at the high school. And my intent tonight would be to kind of do this a little different than we've done in the past. I've given you information, PowerPoint that I have given you that we'll go through tonight. But again, our focus is gonna be a little bit different than maybe what I've presented in the past. So I'm gonna start by looking at our three strategic priorities. The first one being our academic achievement priority. And of course, our SMART goal was to improve or reduce failing grades or failing classes at the high school by 10%. So looking at that, and we're gonna show you a little bit of the data as we move along here. But we actually, first semester here, we reduced our failing classes by 81% in the first semester. I think that's pretty good. But again, as we kind of come to a head of what I'll talk about tonight, it's really not good enough. We're gonna keep handling away at, and making sure every student is successful in our building. So what are the things that we're currently doing with this first strategy? Well, one of the things that we've talked about is we're identifying standards, developing power standards, and developing learning targets related to those standards. As we advance our curriculum, our students are gonna have more success in the classroom because our teachers are more focused on what's being taught. So we're gonna continue to work on that, and that's still a work in progress in our building. The second thing that we're looking at, and I'm gonna have Dr. Jaeger talk about that a little bit, is attendance.
Okay, so in terms of the student achievement, part of that is our positive behavior interventions and support. So our PBS initiative. And so a lot of our PBS team is in the back as well, so part of our Link Crew. And so we've been doing a lot of work this year trying to get student leaders involved with running the campaign and getting other students involved. And that's been a cultural shift, getting kids to want to be a part of a successful culture. And so we've been really trying to get a lot of our student leaders to, when we have our Rails rallies, to run those Rails rallies and to be a part of going around on Mondays and whatnot. We have a Rails card going around and giving, recognizing students for positive behavior. So they're the ones going around to their own classmates and saying, "Hey, you've been recognized by so-and-so for your positive behaviors. We want to congratulate you and whatnot." So that's been really, really a positive thing, and Link Crew is part of that as well, so. Yeah.
We'll get to that attendance piece here in a minute. Going back to, okay, that's enough. Did you do that? Focusing on discipline was another. And if you take a look at the slides I've given you, we'll make reference to some of those things here in a minute. But I wanted to just kind of give an overview. just kind of give an overview. One of the things that our goal was when, well, certainly when I came to Spooner and did the research of what Spooner was like 5 years ago, one of the things, one of my goals was to bring the high school back to what it was because the high school was functioning very, very well. If you go back to 14, 15, for example, a lot of the data that I saw was impressive. So my goal was to say, well, if we can get it back to that point, that's a good start. And I'm happy to tell you, we're beyond that point. But here's the thing, one of the things that we focused on is most of the students that we have in our high school know how to make good decisions. What we found, and I want to bring you to this slide, which I think is a really telltale The biograph on the left, and it's hard to read, but hopefully you have it in front of you, is from 2000, oh, excuse me, yeah, 2000, it's 1450, okay, data. And if I remember right, it's about 60-some percent of the students were making good decisions. So the green part of the bar were students without referrals. So 67% of the student body did not have a referral. And if you look at data throughout high schools in our nation, that's a pretty good mark. If you can get 67, 70% of your students making the right decisions all the time, you've got a pretty good building. As you move across, you see that that changed. There was a couple of years there where we're in the 40, 46, 48% of the students have zero Again, that's not where we want to be. We go to last year, we got that back up to 66% of students making good decisions on the right side of the fence. This year, beginning of the semester, we had 90%. We actually have 0 to 1 referrals. We actually have 96% of our students in that category. So what does that mean? That means that approximately, when we talk about our workload, there's 14 to 15 students that we've identified that have issues that we work with on a daily basis. And again, it's refining and getting it down to what students really need us. And from our perspective, from the administrative office, is those are the students we need to target and we'll work with. When we talk about social, excuse me, social emotional issues, what can high school really do? We can give them a great place to learn, we can give them a great place where they're safe, we can build strong relationships with them, and as a result of that, what will that do? That will reduce that number. That's why we have 96% of our students that have 1 or 0 referrals, because our staff and our focus has been on their experience. So when we look at what we're looking at here, the information is, I think, very telling in the direction that we're headed. I want to give you one more piece of evidence, we'll say, in this situation. A freshman last year as 8th graders, first semester, had 621 referrals. This year, first semester in high school, they've had 20, okay? That's a 97% increase in improvement in behavior. Now, do we have some targeted students that need some additional help? Absolutely. And those are the ones we can focus on. If we can get the majority of our students doing the right thing all the time, gives us a lot of time to focus on those that are having trouble. And again, building those relationships, because if we want our academics, academics in the high school to change in a positive direction, we have to get all students focused in that direction. So again, that's what we're working on with that process. So I'm gonna leave this slide up and let Dr. Dieter here talk about attendance.
So just a part of our goal was additionally to reduce unexcused tardies because for the last couple of years, that was one of our main concerns with our building, was our students just weren't getting to class on time, they weren't arriving to school on time, so we had quite a bit of unexcused tardies. Well, if, as a teacher, you know that that causes a disruption to your class when kids arrive late and whatnot, so we really, with the scheduling changes and the supervision changes we've made, so we've really seen a decrease in that. So Semester 1, unexcused tardies, from this year to last year, we've seen a 59% decrease. So last year, we had 591. Semester 1, unexcused tardies, this year, we have 244. And over a course, the last 4 years, from 15, 16 to 18, 19, we're averaging about 1,200 unexcused tardies a year, and currently, right now, we're at 336. So if we continue on this projection, we're gonna fall significantly lower than where we've been at. And for me, I just feel like it's a value shift in our students wanting to be to school on time, wanting to get to class on time, and also respecting the fact that our teachers are doing the best they can. And showing up late is not very respectful in that regard. And I think that if we continue to work on that too, with that in mind, I think the achievement piece will also follow along too. So a big part of that, obviously, was our going down to a full block schedule, and that eliminated a lot of our passing times, so that added a lot to do with it as well.
So last thing that I wanted to mention in the academic part here is the fact that what's our next step? It seems like we're in a pretty good spot, we're doing some pretty good things, but pretty good isn't good enough. You know, if we're not expecting greatness, then we won't get greatness. So one of the things that we're looking at from our block scheduling system is how do we use that more efficiently? How do we service kids? How do we take what we've done as a building and do the same thing in a classroom? So as a classroom teacher, if I can figure out and identify who those 2 students are in my class that need me most, then that's where I can focus my time and again, create this achievement that we're looking at. It isn't that all students don't need us, all students don't need us as much as others. So breaking that up into a situation where we can help them will certainly continue to help drive our mission of academic success. So if we go down to the strategic priority 2, retaining staff, we wanted to retain 90% of our staff for next year. How have we done on that one? Well, we got 2 retirements. That puts us at 92%, so no one else can leave. And again, the environment that we've created, that's certainly our strategy, that teachers want to be here. And really, that's what I feel every day when we walk through the building, that we are working together for the same cause, for the same results. Last one was expanding communication. What are we currently doing that I think has created some success here? I sent out a weekly letter, it goes to all staff, it really focuses on our mission for that week, because it changes with events that take place. We try to refocus on not only our priorities, but also the individual items that we need to work on as a school building. We also, you know, part of our discipline process is that parents are contacted. If a student does something the second time, parents are not involved in that process. And again, that's been an effective tool. In my experience, in my role, I've never had a parent that wasn't supportive in what we do. Our PBS success cards have been going home. If a student's doing something that we want to recognize, our postcard goes home. And again, it's another way to improve that communication. Our quarterly letter that goes home, the district newsletter, and of course, our social media posts are also part of that process. So, you know, lastly, we have this data in front of you, and I think it's really telling. If you look at our academic updates, again, I'll let you look at that on your own, we'll continue to track that as we move along. So I'm gonna, again, stop at this point, I'm gonna invite our Link Crew up here, but before, as they're coming down, do you have any questions for me?
Just keep up the good work, okay? Can you do that?
I will work hard at it. So let me introduce the group. This is the group. This is the group we sent down to be trained for Link Crew. It's a training that I've gone through. I don't wish it on anybody, and they found out, once they went through the training, what I was talking about. Birdie on approach should be one of those things. It's good to demonstrate at that point. So what it basically is, is a program to help, which I think is a huge part of what we're gonna be doing in the future, and that is making this a better place for our freshmen as they transition to the high school. But now, we actually have an official program with an official curriculum that really drives the process. I'm gonna let them explain what it is. Mr. Merkt, Mrs. Miss Jensen, Miss Gerter, Ms. Sheek, and Mrs. Myers, we're all in attendance at the conference, so with that, I'm gonna let them do their thing.
I'll start by saying that the training was actually not as bad as it may sound. In the very beginning, the gentleman leading the training said his goal was this will be the best professional development you've ever had, and I can say, and I think everybody can say, it really was. It, I guess, is kind of built as a transition program to get freshmen into the high school with some good support in place right away. But beyond that, it allows some other kids, juniors and seniors, I don't know, it's just this.
Deaf in the layer messes around?
Yeah. The, thank you. Beyond that, it allows juniors and seniors to kind of step into leadership roles. So it's not just us and the freshmen there with peers that are slightly older than them. We actually have some pretty extensive trainings in place for those kids. They have to apply to be a Link Crew member, and then once we train them, then they have those relationships with their freshman groups. Beyond just the first day, there's a lot of follow-ups throughout the year. They'll meet with them every few weeks or a month, every so often, there's a few like social events planned, so it's not just, welcome to high school, we had this great day, and that's it. It's a year-long support system, and then we hope a lot of the freshmen will step into those leadership roles later on. There it is. And that's what I was saying, shared leadership is a big part of this, giving students a voice, and I guess, last but not least, just reiterating promoting the positive school culture. So we're not just letting freshmen in on the first day, let them have a great day, and then deal with it for 178 more days. It's full support for their freshman year.
You said, "Yep"?
Yep. I'll add, one part of our Link Crew leader, the mentors who come, it's really going to be like a vast, like diverse group of students. So the purpose is that it's not just like all of our academically higher-standing kids, it's like every subcategory of students, so students from low-income families, students who play sports, students who are in the student council, like students from all groups found in the school system will be part of the leaders. So that way, when freshmen come in, they can identify with leaders that they see as their mentors, and they can work to make those connections with other students as well.
Any questions?
So is this gonna be in conjunction with your expert engineers and your mentorship program that you already have?
Yes, that, that stuff that we made up, this will become that. Link Crew will become that. Yep, will replace that.
So again, what we were looking for is a structured program for our, even though we were doing some things, this is a program that, if you use it with fidelity, like the other things that we have, it is effective. And again, it's got more structure in each one of them, got a pretty massive binder of curriculum that they'll use. I guess it's due now, that's how long ago since I was involved with it. So again, you know, that's, it's a big part of what we do. We talk about the social-emotional issues that we deal with on a regular basis, and oftentimes, in our setting, you hear all the things we can't do. This is one of those things we can do. And again, that's what we're focusing on at the high school, what types of things can we do to support these students that have these issues? So again, that's what we're looking at from our perspective. This helps build those strong relationships. And again, if a student is going to drop out of high school, it's usually determined their freshman year. And again, all the other issues that combine and the struggles that they have stem oftentimes from the freshman year. This is another way to combat that, so. Any other questions for any of us?
Were you asking for anything or you're just informing us?
Just letting you know what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move on to item G, to consider the purchase of Illuminate Education DNA Program Package.
We get the presentation and we'll take a talk for a little bit, okay? All right. So I'm really gun-shy on this feedback to the mic here, so I hope you're able to hear from me, and that's as close as I'm going to that thing this evening. For about the past year, we've been having conversations about the implementation of professional learning communities here in the Spooner Area School District. And if you recall, really, the core professional learning communities are 4 questions. First one being, what do we expect our students to know and do? And this year has really been focused on getting that nailed down, because if we don't have question 1 nailed down, we can't go to 2, 3, and 4. So this year has really been about unpacking standards, learning our curriculum, fielding a new curricula resource in math for grades K-8 with Eureka Math, and that work has been good. One piece that we've seen then is we look at question 2, and that is, how will we know if our students have learned what we identified in question 1? That we have a need, and we have a need to support formative assessment. And that formative assessment, if you recall, is kind of the process check, kind of that checkpoint along the way on how learning is going for students, and then using that information to inform instruction. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit and make a request for your consideration here. The Spooner Area School District currently uses Illuminate Education's EduClima and FastBridge products. And I'm joined tonight by Dr. Berta Dieter, district school psychologist, Dana Lucius, district English language arch specialist, and Kayla Rudy, the district math specialist. And they have all been up recently talking about some of those products as we look to move into FastBridge for our screening tool. Our request is going to be to spend $16,000 of the district's 2021 curriculum budget to purchase and field Illuminate Education's DNA product in support of our work of those collaborative PLC teams. And what this would do, would district-wide, would enhance our data analysis capabilities, and it would really help us move forward in that formative assessment development. Gotta leave it open, it's an open meeting. Yeah, no problem. So the breakdown of how this $16,000 would be spent is, part of it would be a kind of a standard package. part of it would be a kind of a standard package that would be $7600. And in that, we'd get project implementation, setup, and configuration support. So then, all that setup work that comes with fielding something that's significantly large like that. The second piece, it would be among the most important. And that would be, each building would have one day of training for us, up to six hours long. So really comprehensive training to make sure that teachers have the training that they need to be able to use this really powerful tool. From the last two pieces of the costing out are the per-student licenses. So $5,700 gets us 1,200 licenses. And it also gets us access to the key data systems section, which is the assessment bank. So at $16,000 for next year, what we would be looking at in the future then would be a cost of about $8,400. So the cost would go down in subsequent years. The intent of bringing ILLUMINATE Education DNA into the Spooner Area School District would be to provide resources in support of collaborative teams in their work in the analysis of student data and developing standards-based formative assessment to gauge that learning progress and to inform instruction.
Okay. So just to start, I'm just going to, it's a quick, about a minute and a half video for you to watch.
As a teacher, you look at every day comparing your children for the future. With so many initiatives and requirements, this task can be daunting. ILLUMINATE Education's Data and Assessment, or DNA platform, can help by allowing you to quickly capture and analyze valuable data that will guide instruction and improve student outcomes. With DNA, you can easily create short-term assessments to get immediate feedback about your daily lessons. Click answer sheets from your computer and scan your desk, or create online assessments. Give them our online tools to assess them, such as protractors, highlighters, and text-to-speech. With rich, easy-to-read reports, you get immediate feedback. You can track progress in state-specific standards and use this data to design an action plan. Quickly group students based on their level of mastery or direct them to specific learning resources that accommodate anything from the evaluation chain. Now, you can make better use of your PRCs by having your points and data at your fingertips. You can whole-study through multiple performance measures. Use DNA to collaborate with colleagues who define common needs and provide relevant innovations and improved instructional strategies. With DNA, you'll get a better view of student progress and can differentiate instruction and dramatically improve student achievement. To see a lot of data, DNA can contact us today.
All right. So basically, yep, that's going to... So with the use of DNA, it would be to improve instruction through the form... Or through the use of formative assessments. DNA would provide all K-12 teachers, one place to build and administer those formative assessments. And they can currently use, there's about 100,000 questions in their test bank right now for math, science, social studies, and ELA. You can also upload assessments that are already created that you have, or you can create your own assessment within that tool. As we're looking at the purpose of assessment, the assessment of learning is to see what the students can do. The assessment for learning would be what the teacher should do in response to what the students are learning. And then, the assessment as learning is what is happening as the learning occurs. Students are assessing what they're doing. So as we're looking at those benefits, the teachers are continually going back to that question number two to see, how do we know if those students have learned it? Where they can use that data then to quickly group their students and support those who are or who aren't mastering those standards.
So some of the research behind DNA, they have a group of individuals who look at the questions and they rotate and look at different groups of the questions every single Friday. So the questions are continually being assessed. The depth of knowledge is assessed and identified for each item. One of the kind of big aha moments for me when I was learning about DNA and when I was in one of the presentations this summer at a conference, was that when they go into a school, a lot of times, they'll have teachers, when they're first rolling out DNA, put together an assessment for their classroom. So maybe they'll want to focus on three standards of ELA, or two of math, or whatever it is. And they'll have them go through the test bank. They'll identify the standards that they want to select for that assessment. And they'll pick out the questions that match that standard. And they said about 80% of the time, almost every question that the teacher picks out for that assessment is the depth of knowledge one or two. Because that's what we most commonly use in our classrooms as the assessment. And that is not what our state assessments are assessing on. So there's a big gap right now with what is very commonly used in schools across the United States as formative assessments versus what the expectations are for state assessments and other assessments out there of our students. So the depth of knowledge is assessed for every item in the test bank. And you can actually run a quick report that says, 50% of my questions that I picked for this assessment are that depth of knowledge one, all the way up to four, whatever it is. So you can make sure that your test is rigorous enough for the kids. And that you've got a nice, well-balanced assessment. Rubrics are created for items. So if it's an item that requires a written response or an essay, short answer, you can have rubrics that are already created for you that all of the teachers can look at. And you can make sure that across the grade level, then, all students are being assessed in a consistent manner. Reliability and validity of the items are analyzed for each item. And reliability and validity just means that we are for sure measuring what we say we're measuring. So reliability is the consistency of the item. But every time we ask this question, we are actually asking about that standard. And the validity is that we are actually measuring what we say we're measuring. And then, I just quoted some research studies up there showing that the effect sizes for formative assessments have been found to be between .4, but more commonly up to .7. And in education, a .7 is a very strong effect size. Formative assessment has been found to produce greater increase in student achievement than both class size reduction or increasing the teacher's content knowledge in that specific area. So even if you send a staff number to a very specific training on a content area, if we're not measuring how that instruction is playing out in the classroom, you're not going to get as big a bang for your buck on that student achievement. So we still have to be measuring if what we're doing is working for those students in the class. And then, John Hattie is a pretty well-known researcher. And that's the quote on the left. And he also was just saying that the common themes in what makes various strategies successful are teachers talking with other teachers about teaching and planning, deliberate attention to learning intentions and success criteria, and a constant effort to ensure teachers are seeking feedback information as to the success of their teaching on their students. And to me, that sums up PLC in a nutshell, but focuses on those formative assessments.
And last, I'm just going to talk about how this fits that Spooner Area School District. So DNA is the perfect companion for the work that the school district is already doing with the professional learning community process. Like Dr. Eisen said, the second major question in that process is how do we know if students are learning? Well, DNA will give us that opportunity to quickly create standards-based assessments, which will ultimately tell us if our students are learning. Formative assessment is the cornerstone of that, of an effective professional learning community. And DNA will help teachers with a more, to provide... Will help teachers in a more effective way to create these formative assessments. And the questions that they'll find are aligned with standards and an appropriate depth of knowledge and rigor level. And then, DNA will also help staff to move from scores to what's next. Questions three and four in the PLC process ask, what do we do when students learn? And what do we do when students don't learn? DNA has the option to print several reports that are available to inform decisions and access instructional resources to support the learning of all students. So we can help look at those students that maybe didn't learn. And also, what do we do next for those students that have already learned? So it really just has a lot of different options to it that perfectly tie in with the professional learning community work that we're already doing. Do you guys have any questions right now?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to start. I appreciate what you're doing. And I'm trying to figure out, how does this fit in with EduClimber? And how does this fit in with some of the curriculums that we've been purchasing, which have the test questions already built into that curriculum? Are you going to be replacing those test questions? And then, the question is, who's going to come up with the test questions that the instructor wants to use? Is it going to be the same questions across the fourth grade? Or is it going to be certain instructors picking and choosing what questions they want to do for their class? And so where is the control over... So when we get an assessment and the instructor says, "My students all did really well," how do we know how the students did?
So lots of parts to a really good question there. I want to talk about the curriculum piece and the work that we've done the past few years first. So in no way, shape, or form do we look to cast that aside. In fact, the curriculum that we've developed, the DNA program, that feature, would allow us to assess how our students are doing on progress towards that curriculum. Okay? In terms of meeting those content standards that are broken out by grade levels. So it informs teaching based on the feedback that teachers get from students as they do this formative assessment along the way. So we purchased the Eureka Math grades K-8. And that does have the feature within it to do formative assessment along the way. So we certainly don't look to cast that aside. That was a major investment of finances and time. And we had just a really great team that vetted that product. District-wide, we continue to use that. This would certainly be a supplement to the good things that are going on already.
Okay. And I'm going to answer a few more of the questions. So EduClimber is the data warehouse that houses all of the data. Everything talks into EduClimber. So FastBridge screens our kids and progress monitors our kids, not based on standards, but based on like national percentile data, how kids are doing across, compared to kids across the nation. So FastBridge comes in and gives us that screening data and that progress monitoring data. EduClimber is the data warehouse for that. DNA then would tell us how are our kids doing on our standards? The standards that we have selected, that we have identified as our target standards, how are they doing? That's where that data comes in to EduClimber. So EduClimber just houses it all. And it's one spot for us to pull up and see how are our kids doing in all of these different areas. As far as housing assessments, Eureka Math. They have, due to copyright issues, the assessments are not already in there word-for-word, but the templates are in there. So say, for example, a Unit 2 test has, the first three questions are multiple choice, the fourth one is a short answer, the fifth one is true or false, and so on. That Unit 2 test, the template is in there with the exact number of questions, the exact type of questions. We just merge it in there. So we would not be using, we would not be losing any of the assessments that we have through Eureka Math already. We just merge it in to DNA, and it's all there. As far as who is, you know, creating the other assessments for ELA and whatnot, I think that'd be a combination. Some of them would be common formative assessments that are decided at grade-level meetings. Some of them are going to be quicker, exit tickets that teachers are just creating. Needs to be a common, or needs to be a diverse range.
But even within that, teachers are all collaborating already, especially like K-4, when they're making those assessments.
Yes. And DNA allows you to put your own assessments in. You don't have to use their test bank items, but you can. And even if you put your own question in there, their researchers will take a look at it and analyze that depth of knowledge for you and check on their reliability and validity towards the standards that you say it measures.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to echo that as well, Mr. Johnson, that, you know, the question of who will determine what goes, what's being assessed and how it's done. It's the people that are the most important ones in that process. And that's the teachers. If they work together collaboratively as teams, this is a resource, as has been mentioned, that's got thousands and thousands of items within it. And it's a powerful tool for teacher teams then to go in and say, "Here's what we want to assess. Here's the items that best assess that." And they're able to create that assessment and implement the fidelity across their team.
Have you, are there any other products out there that do this?
Eureka Math has something specifically for...
Yeah. Eureka Math just has their own platform that they use. But it's only, you know, if you purchase that curricular resource, and then, it's only Eureka Math. Where DNA will cover every subject area. ELA, science, social studies, just have that continuity across all subject areas. Okay.
Are they able to tailor that to the learning standards of Wisconsin? Are we able to narrow it down by state?
Yep.
At least so that we're focusing on what's the requirement first.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yep. The Common Core standards are in there. And then, next-generation science standards. Yep. And I don't, whatever.
So we're assessing based on the standards that the state of Wisconsin is saying, "We expect students to know and be able to do this."
And it all sounds really great. But have you had any teachers test it, look at it?
We do not have access to it.
Until you purchase it?
Correct.
Okay.
I've seen it, I've seen it downloaded live. And I have played around in like a sandbox at a conference that Dr. Dieter and I attended last summer. And that, it seemed cool. I'm not a teacher. It was pretty user-friendly. But we have not, we don't have access to a sandbox at this time.
Okay.
What are the intent coming forward with this product? Is it's from a family of products that we already use two of those key components with? So we know that the data pulls over from EduClimber. We know that FastBridge, which is a piece we just talked about last month, integrates within that. So we think that the familiarity that people district-wide have with those programs is going to make the implementation of this win back by adequate training. That's going to make it as seamless as we're going to find with any product that's available at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So $16,000, that's what it costs out of the 2021 budget? Curriculum budget of, what was the total budget for our curriculum for that timeframe?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I'd give it to you. I could take a guess. But it's usually about $50,000, what we have.
Say that again?
Usually, we budget about $50,000 for curriculum.
Okay. And so with this program, then, after we purchase it, implement it, then there's an ongoing cost every year at $8,400? Yes. And are we paying ongoing cost for Eureka Math, EduClimber, and FastBridge?
For Eureka Math, it's just the consumables. It wouldn't be the formative assessment part of it. But it would actually be like the workbooks, the problem sets that students are doing.
I don't know the cost of EduClimber or FastBridge, but there is a per-student seat for FastBridge. And I don't know the contract with EduClimber, but I know we signed a multi-year contract to get a price discount a while ago. I don't know the details. Sorry.
So just looking forward, are we going to have to increase our curriculum budget? Are we going to be able to purchase this and stay within our budget ongoing? So roughly staying at the...
When we get, when we get out ahead of these types of items early enough for budgeting purposes, we're able to build them in. And then, knowing that that $8,400 is going to be an ongoing cost each year, obviously, that's just something that becomes part of the budget on, you know, going forward.
Yeah. My concern is, I mean, I know this is really good. But my concern is, when we build those next budgets, that means then we're increasing our budget then because we know that's what we're going to have to face. we're going to have to face, and.
No, no, we wouldn't increase it. It would become part of it. Sometimes we don't use all that $50,000 that we put in the curriculum budget. So, you know, the remaining amount left for purchases for the year would just be roughly $42,000 or $43,600, or $41,000.
Hey, I'm going to take you back a month or so ago, when the team presented about the transition to FastBridge. And at that point, there was, there were some cost savings moving away from STAR and going to FastBridge. So while we do have a, you know, an expenditure of $16,000, as we look at the larger budget, we know that we've realized some measure of savings, making that transition from STAR to FastBridge.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Have there been, as teachers work in PLC teams, does it, has there been an indication that they would appreciate and use, and that this would be helpful in their decision-making in the PLC process?
I get asked on a daily basis to help them with formative assessments and to make sure that that rigor is there and that depth of knowledge. So yes, this is, they're begging for it.
Can I ask, just, how can this, is this duplicating services? Is this duplicating what we're already doing with EduClimber?
No.
No.
EduClimber.
This is in addition to.
Yes. EduClimber is just the data warehouse. It only stores the data and creates the graphs and the visuals, and it analyzes the data for us. This would create the assessments for us and allow the students to take the assessments and grade the assessments.
Can you give sort of a definition between the difference of formative assessments and?
So EduClimber just shows us the scores that kids get on things. It doesn't administer the assessment, it just shows us the scores, and it puts all kinds of different data in one spot, so we can see all different scores in one spot. But it doesn't actually administer the assessment.
So teachers are tasked with a huge challenge to first teach and then make sure that every student in their class is learning what they should be learning. And when they're not, or they're exceeding that, they need to know how, where, and what can we do to make everybody have gains in their education? So to do that on a large scale in a classroom setting, specific to each child, and then the expectation that we see growth in all of them is a huge undertaking, and it's, this is a tool to use to adequately test student knowledge and then tailor instruction according to that.
That's a, that's a key point, Mrs. Bruch. So EduClimber will give us the student score, and that's where it ends. DNA lets us drill down at the individual student level then, and have a better understanding of how that score is arrived at. What are those, what are those tasks within that that the student is doing well on, and what the tasks are that the student needs that extra scoop of support that comes in the PLC process?
So I hear you, we then might put students into interventions, things like that.
Can you use the microphone so we can hear you?
Yes, sorry. We then might put students into interventions, things like that, and we then would track their data using progress monitoring tools. EduClimber again then houses that data, creates the graphs, allows us to see, is there a trend? It creates a trend line for us and a goal line. Is there a trend line above the goal line? Makes, allows us to make decisions about, is this intervention effective for that student, or do we need to do something else? So EduClimber takes all of that data and allows us to continue making decisions. But right now, we have screening data, which happens three times a year. We have progress monitoring data for the students who are in interventions. We are missing the classroom, the formative assessment data that is telling us how are our kids doing on our standards, based on our classroom instruction, and that is a key piece of data. So right now, we're unable to make decisions around that data. EduClimber would house it and allow us to have a full picture of the child's performance throughout their education.
Would we be able to figure out what teachers are using this and what teachers aren't, if the tools are actually doing what they're supposed to do?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I, you know, if we purchase this, it's going to be an expectation. Okay. So that'll be a part of their, just their requirement or expectation?
Right. We'd expect teams to use this tool, and we'd make sure they were trained to use it.
Okay.
And I also look at it as kind of an efficiency tool as well. So let's say we give them an assessment on adding and subtracting to 10, and maybe I have three students that don't do very well on it. Well, I can spend my time, what strategy am I, what different strategy am I going to do to teach them, rather than spending my time, what different questions am I going to ask them later? DNA houses thousands of questions that I can just look at and click and choose which one I'm going to ask. I don't have to rewrite the questions to measure their growth. I can actually spend that time teaching them, reteaching them in a different way. So I look at it as a, as a huge efficiency factor for teachers as well.
So I hear somebody say too that they offer different strategy suggestions or resources within too?
Yes. Yep, they look at resources that if they're students that aren't doing so well, what can we use? If they're doing really well, what can we use next also?
Are there any more questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ladies, good job.
Moving on to item H to consider.
Do we need to find a?
I haven't been convinced.
Enough to bring this forward to the board or not?
Yes. I think you need to go back to the one about the interventionist too.
Yeah, we do. Move that forward. Thank you. So we will start with that. Item D, if you, board members will go back to the Spooner Elementary School interventionist proposal, and do we have general consensus to move that forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And the other two are presentation plans to place and put on file, so we will move to the eliminate education DNA, and do we have general consensus to move this forward to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll be moving on to item H to consider first semester 2020, 21, early college credit program and Start College Now applications.
Well, hello. Losing my voice, I apologize. March 1st was the state deadline for students who are interested in taking college classes next fall to apply for approval for that. So you'll see the different, you know, there's different programs, early college credit, Start College Now, and then we have our concurrent enrollment through our English program. So the different students that are interested in those, they're really doing the best guess at this point, because the colleges don't have their fall schedule up yet. We don't have our fall schedule up yet. So a lot of estimates as far as we think we would maybe take these courses, but these are their best guesses. Any questions about any of it?
How many students participate in this, Spooner?
A lot. Well, the different program, you know, we always have, I would say 40 students in the English classes. There's two different, Mr. Thornley teaches Writing 114, and then in Honors English 3, there's Writing 116 and English 150, which is eight college credits. So just in that, he generally has about 40 students every year. And then I would say, every semester is different, but I would always say there's 10 to 15 that actually take an extra college class during the school day.
Thank you. Do we have general consensus to move this forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Moving on to item I to consider the 2020, 2021 teacher contracts.
In, in order to follow the statutory deadline of April 15th, the board has been given a list of contracts that will be presented to staff, and so we're just asking for approval to move these to the board meeting.
Do we have general consensus to move these forward?
Can I ask a question? I do have a question. The question is, there's a couple on here that there's contingent upon some completion of some training or whatever. Is there a certain cut-off date that we're going to make a decision on that? The question is, the contracts are being renewed with the condition of?
Licenseur for.
Licenseur information. So at what point are we going to know that the licensure did or did not happen?
So it looks like this is saying that if they're not completed by the start of this upcoming school year.
We'd have to replace them before the school year. We need to know before that is what I'm asking.
If, I believe if they wouldn't have the licensure before the school year, they would go back to a long-term agreement.
Okay.
If they have the licensure, they will be presented with an actual contract. Actual contract and long-term agreement are two different things. So if they are able to receive their licensure before the school year, they will get a contract. Otherwise, it will stay as a long-term agreement. Limited term agreement.
Yes.
If that's the way we would want to operate, then that's continued.
Yep, so in the past year or so, as a board, you've approved a plan for how we move long-term agreement teachers to regular contract teachers, and this is a part of that, that they have to meet their licensing requirements.
Any other questions? Do we have general consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item J to consider the Spooner Elementary School Life Touch Yearbook contract for 2020, 21.
So for item J and K, they're being brought before the board because they are contracts that we enter into. Nothing new. We see these every year, and these are student-paid-for yearbooks, so we're just looking for the approval for the actual signing of the contracts.
Any questions? Do we have consensus to move J and K to the general board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item L to consider CISA 10 and 11 services contracts.
Yep, again, so something that the board has presented with each year. As you are aware, we enter into shared services agreements with CISA 10 and CISA 11 for services that we aren't able to provide in-house, such things as Title I services, they help us stay in compliance with Title I. Hearing impaired services, we're not able to have a hearing staff member on staff, so if we have a student that needs those services, we can contract out with them. So what you guys have before you are the CISA 10 contract and the CISA 11 contract that we're looking for.
Are there any major changes?
On the CISA 11 contract corresponding with the last approval from the board, we are dropping the business services portion, because we will be hiring out that halftime person in the district office.
Thank you. Do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Moving on to item N to consider new level volume 29, Number One Policy Update.
A very significant amount of updates, over, over 70 when all was said and done, and I just, I would, the onboard docs that are there for you to look at, and I would just take you to the update sheet that Caitlin has provided, and that would be the first document that you have in that long, long list of documents underneath that item. And thank you to Caitlin for putting that together. What you'll see on that form is the policy number and title, and then what kind of update, and a summary of what that update is.
So this is just to approve the first reading, correct?
What, would this be our first reading, or?
Yep.
Okay. And is this the first of three large batches that we said? Okay.
Thank you in advance.
Yeah. And for doing this, for so many reasons. Are there any questions at this point? So we'll still have more time to read through these for a second.
You're not going to have time to read them all, but I will guarantee you, even a policy that's not something we like is better than no policy. So at least we have a policy.
So I only have three left. I read the rest of them.
Good for you.
Did you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have, well, should we approve, have a vote on the first reading? Since we're considering this our first reading.
You pull that forward to your.
To a regular board meeting. So that will be our first reading. That's what I have. Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. 30, 60, 90-day planning. That document again is uploaded to Board Box. Were there any questions, or anything that anyone wanted to speak to on this document?
The only question I have is, I see that the senior retreat is crossed out of there. Is it going to be scheduled for something, or are you just getting rid of that one?
It's a financial issue. So right now, we're looking at not discontinuing it due to the fact of the high cost and lack of funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll receive and place that on file. Moving on to item O, the financial update.
Financial update for January, I'll just walk through it really quickly. The beginning balance was $835,131. Total receipts for the month of January were $3,557,995. Total expenditures was $3,66853. Just a note on that, that's a little higher than normally what you would see, but about half of that was we paid back the line of credit, so it has been paid off. And that was in the admin notes from last month, leaving, ending balance of $732,273.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Well, what's, what's the projected deficit this month? Are we on target?
This month?
For the, for the year.
There's no change from last month. Yep, we don't, you know, we do about a mid-year monitor, which we did in January, and, you know, then the next time we look at expenses is when we shut down purchasing for staff, which is right around April 15th, we start to compile where we're going to end up, and if we have any funds left over for June to spend a little bit extra on maybe pre-buying some stuff for next year, or maybe that extra vehicle if we need to purchase that. So right now, the projection hasn't changed. We're looking at what was presented at the annual meeting.
And can you remind us what that number was?
I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I cannot remember what that is. I think it was right around $100,000, $98,000, I think it was.
Was it deficit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's great news that the CLC program funding is back on for the next five years, and that was where a lot of that deficit came from, right, was funding?
That was for last year's.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is just, that boiler was part of that, and we all forgot about that.
All right, thank you so much. How about vouchers, February vouchers? Were there any questions or concerns over the vouchers? Do we have consensus to move them to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
All set.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.